This is meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Sabi George. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Pressley. Counsel Wu.
Present.
And Counsel Zakeham. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise, and I will turn it over to Counsel Linehan to introduce our faith leader for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Counsel Linehan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you Friar Tom for coming here today. Friar Tom Conway is, he's the Executive Director of the St. Anthony Shrine here in downtown. He's an alumnus of Siena College in New York. He earned his master's degree in Theological Study from Washington Theological Union. He joined the Order of Friars Minor in 1988, and he was ordained as a Franciscan Friar in 2005. He's been a Friar for over 25 years, a member of the Board of Directors at St. Francis Palace. So he's extremely active and always working some of the toughest neighborhoods and enclaves in downtown Boston. He works with those who are most challenged in life, and he's dedicated his life to serving our most needy and also our city of Boston. So without any further ado, Friar Tom Conway. Friar?
It's an honor to be here, obviously. I'll tell you three quick things that are happening at St. Anthony Shrine is we have a health clinic for homeless women on Thursday mornings, and we're expanding opioid and addiction services for those women. We're doing that with a partnership with the Boston Healthcare for the Homeless. Harvard Business School is doing a case study on us, a video case study, and what that is, is an examination of how an organization which has a reputation of being nice makes hard business decisions. They're teaching to MBA students in organizational behavior and in their strategy classes. This has a lot of potential, I think, to give nice exposure to Boston and to sort of be a cutting-edge, we're sort of trying to hold ourselves out as a cutting-edge nonprofit that does innovative things, and Harvard Business School is picking this up. You might be seeing some things in the media about this. We're getting some nice feedback that folks are interested in this. So, and then the last thing is we have our annual gala on October 12th. We're honoring Tom O'Brien of HYM Developers. We have lots of big-name Catholics at that event, so you're very much invited. Be happy to have you as part of that. So we call ourselves the prayer, and we're especially just mostly grateful, right, for this wonderful opportunity to serve this amazing city. We're grateful for each other, for our good work, our goodwill. We're grateful for all that God has given us. We're grateful that we have these wonderful forums to get together and make decisions that affect so many folks in good ways. We're grateful for your service especially also. So we ask that today's deliberations be thoughtful and kind and peaceful and humor-filled. May God be with you in all things. We ask this through the God who lives and moves among us. Amen.
Thank you, Friar. Thank you, Counsel Linehan. We will start with approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved. And Madam Clerk, could you please also mark that Counsel Pressley is here? And on to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0877, message and order authorizing the Public Works Department to accept and expend a grant of $6 million to Massachusetts Department of Transportation for pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic improvements on Summer Street in the South, I'm sorry, in the South Boston waterfront district.
Docket number 0877 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation.
Docket number 0878, message and order authorizing the Neighborhood Development to accept and expend a grant of $45,000 from the Harvard Business School to the Department of Neighborhood Development to support shaping housing policies and real estate projects that will improve the lives of Bostonians and shape the future of Boston's neighborhoods.
Docket 0878 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 0879, message and order for confirmation of renewal appointment of constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2017, and ending April 30, 2020.
Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty on docket 0879.
Thank you, Madam President. Just move for suspension and passage. This is another one in the line that we've dealt with in the last few weeks, coming on the heels of Counsel McCarthy's hearing, and we got a commitment from the Commissioner with respect to the process moving forward with his, the full multi-state queries and BOPs, what have you. So I would like to move for suspension and passage at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty moves for suspension and passage of docket 0879. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0879 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0880, the constables' bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer were received. Rico Damas, Randy Duh, Alex McNeil, Phil Moore Phillips.
Similarly, Chair moves for approval under the usual terms and conditions. These are the bonds related to constables that we have approved already. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0880 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Reports of committees. Madam Clerk, if you could read all three together, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0536, Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0536, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY2018, submit a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. Docket number 0537, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0537, message and order for an annual appropriation for the School Department for FY2018, submit a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. And docket number 0538, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0538, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts Federal Law, Chapter 32b, submit a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice.
Chair recognizes Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. To date, we have held 27 hearings amounting to over 56 hours of oral testimony on the fiscal year 2018 budget. During this process, we have received extensive testimony from departments that have appeared before this body for hearings, as well as written testimony from departments that were not called in for hearings. Members of the public have also offered extensive written and oral testimony on various departmental budgets. In order to give us time to review and consider all of this testimony and to allow the administration to make any necessary adjustments to the budget to reflect any updated information, such as recently passed collective bargaining agreements, I am recommending that docket numbers, dockets 0536, 0537, and 0538 be rejected without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Madam Clerk, please mark that Counsel Jackson is here. Would anyone else like to comment on these three budget docket? Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I want to thank the Chair for his hard work and many meetings to get us to where we are today, and also for the years that he's put in in this space. I think this budget is deficient, and first, as Chair of the Education Committee, I find it unacceptable that, again, this year, the Boston Public Schools are going to be underfunded. $11 million is actually being cut out of 49 schools, and most notably, Brighton High School, which is now a Level 4 school, is getting a $1 million cut. The McCormick School is getting a $950,000 cut. Madison Park Vocational Technical High School, our only vocational technical high school in the city of Boston that has also fallen down to a Level 4 school, is receiving a $455,000 cut. That is unacceptable, and it does not show the investment that we should have in the young people in the city of Boston, or the future of the economy that we should have in the city of Boston. It is incumbent upon our body to step up here, and also for the mayor's office, to step up and fund what is our priority, what should be young people in the city of Boston. In addition, I put forward legislation to have an immigrant legal defense fund that I believe the city should fund some of. There are many nonprofit organizations, as well as organizations that are philanthropic, and they would like to step forward on this. What we know is in the city of Boston, if we're going to have conversations about immigrants and those who are undocumented at the Boston Immigration Court, if you go there without a lawyer, you only leave 4% of the time. If you go with a lawyer, regardless of the merits of your case, you leave 49% of the time. Cities like New York have actually put $5 million towards this. Los Angeles, as well as Chicago, has invested in that population. In addition, and I want to thank Counsel Zakeham for his leadership in putting forward a city-funded voucher program. I believe it is critical that, especially post-closure of Long Island, there are people who are still homeless. And if anyone, and I drive up Melnea Cass on a regular basis, I also shop in that area, there are hundreds of people who are displaced still and are still homeless. And for $5 million, we would receive 400 city-funded housing vouchers, which could help to stabilize folks who have been displaced and do right by those who were pushed off of that island, due to no fault of their own, Madam President. In addition, this budget also represents walking away from the folks who are, who are supported in Project SOAR and Safe Harbor, and some of them are in this room today. We have someone who sat right at this desk, who told us what was going to happen when the shelter was switched over. He said, "I drive. I'm a chauffeur. I have really important customers, and I like my job. I enjoy the work that I do. I happen to be homeless, but I have a job, and I'm looking to get firmly housed." And about a week or week and a half after, and he noted to us, when the shelter goes to emergency status, that he would have to leave at 7:00 in the morning and not be able to sleep. Well, sadly, not too long after he testified before this body, he actually got in a car accident on the Mass Pike, and he lost his job. So we had someone who had stable work, but simply needed housing. And I would note to you that the rapid rehousing program with $3,600 for first-class and security and to go out into the housing market that we have in the city of Boston is absolutely an unacceptable and unrealistic solution. In addition, I believe that the summer job program is inadequately funded, and that we need to ensure that all 5,000 of the young people who have not gotten jobs in the past and an additional 1,000 that would like jobs year-round should be funded. I note that this budget represents net new revenue of $114 million. Those are dollars that we didn't have last year. And in addition, there are parts or pots of dollars, such as the Parking Meter Fund, that we all know about, and I want to thank my buddy who sits next to me, who's actually, since the day I got here, really spoken to the need to actually use those dollars and be more aggressive, Counsel Lamatina, in the use of those dollars. So I want to thank you for guiding my eyes and attention to that. It is critical that this body step forward and make sure that we take care of everybody with the budget that we have. We don't have all of the money in the world, but we definitely have the dollars to take care of our young people, to take care of those who are most vulnerable, and to take care of individuals who are homeless, HRD-positive, as well as those who are struggling with addiction. So today, I will be following the Chair and voting against this budget, and I look forward to the budget returning to us in a fashion that really looks like the values that we should be exhibiting for the city of Boston and the future of the city of Boston. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Zakeham, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just thank Chairman Siomo and the central staff and his office staff, who have done such a phenomenal job. And I think Counsel Sabi George, that all 27 hearings, if not very close. It's a daunting task, and it certainly is helpful for me, and I think for all of us, to have Counsel Siomo leading this process and putting that time in and making sure that our concerns are addressed, department by department, program by program. So I appreciate that, and I certainly think it's been very helpful. I would just add, Counsel Jackson mentioned the city-funded housing voucher program, something that you and I, Madam President, suggested, I believe, two years ago, for the first time, with the help of the mass alliance of HUD tenants, some of whom are here today. I think it's incredibly important, particularly in the face of a president in Washington who has advocated basically eliminating all federal housing assistance, that we need to look locally and do what we can, given our limited resources. I would certainly hope to see a pilot program in this budget. I know in the past, we've heard from folks on the administration side that perhaps the CPA money would be an appropriate avenue for funding this, but I think it's incredibly important at a time when we have such a need in the city, particularly we have several thousand Boston Public School students who are homeless and their families, to make sure that we have a pilot program to get them into stable and sustainable housing moving forward. So I hope to see that in the new budget. I look forward to continuing the review process, and I also will be following our good chairman's recommendation on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zakeham. Any other comments? Okay, so we will vote on each of these three docket separately. First, the general operating budget, then the Boston Public Schools operating budget, then the OPEB Liability Trust Fund. Counsel Siomo has asked me to clarify that a yea vote will accept the committee report, which recommends rejecting without prejudice. So we're voting yes to reject, and a no vote would essentially not accept the committee report and has the budget theoretically. So we'll start with docket 0536. All in favor of accepting the committee report to reject without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the general operating budget has been rejected without prejudice. For docket 0537, BPS operating, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the BPS operating budget has been rejected without prejudice. And finally, docket 0538, OPEB Liability Trust Fund, all in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the OPEB Liability Trust Fund has been rejected without prejudice. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0760, an ordinance creating the Sanctuary School Act.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the, I see our Education Committee Chair standing. Is it Government Operations, correct?
Yeah.
Chair recognizes Chair of the Government Operations Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the lead sponsor for queuing me up here. But we held a hearing yesterday, and this matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Counsel Tito Jackson, and the proposal would prevent immigration and custom enforcement, known as ICE, from entering Boston Public Schools unless they follow specific procedures. So we heard from several folks at the hearing. We had three panels. We also learned about the current procedures that are in place for BPS in the city of Boston. It should be noted at the hearing, administration officials had referenced some legal concerns that the Law Department had, as well as some potential possible jurisdictional issues that I think need to be ironed out before we can move forward on this. But as a result of that, I'd like to keep the matter in committee for further action. But through the Chair, I would like to offer the lead sponsor an opportunity to talk about last night's hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just also want to note that you actually co-sponsored the housing legislation last year. I erred in not acknowledging you. I want to thank Counsel Flaherty for expediting the hearing. I want to thank Counsel Zakeham, Sabi George, O'Malley, and Pressley for being present. A month, it may not be a big deal in our time, but to families who are fearing being extracted from their schools, as well as their homes and their community, it's a long time. We unanimously passed a resolution, and I forwarded it to the Boston School Committee. And it was my expectation that the school committee would actually act to codify this issue. That was brought to my office by their students, by their parents, but really all of our students, all of our parents, and all of our community, and to listen to their voice. The language is actually tailored from language that we received from our Attorney General and direction that we have received from the Attorney General. And the current language that BPS is using and actually read into the record is actually not in alignment with what our Attorney General has indicated. And so listening to parents, as well as teachers and students, to me leads, leads me to the conclusion that it is incumbent on our body to take courageous and bold leadership when it comes to protecting people who are undocumented in school buildings. And I find it really interesting that ICE is now speaking to us and is now going on record and saying that this is not what they do. Well, you know what? There's a bunch of things that they didn't do before November of last year, and those things are changing. So I think it's really important that we understand what's happened in places throughout our country where there was a parent who was, who was stopped by ICE and taken into custody, I believe it was in California, it was a 50% drop in attendance the next day. 50%. Young people can't learn if they're not in school. And in addition, teachers who don't have answers as to whether or not they can protect their students are not going to have the ability to effectively say, "You know what? You're going to be okay. You're going to be all right." And so I believe, at this time, in a time of so much uncertainty, that I would ask this body to think about what we need to do to ensure that people are safe, what we need to do to lead. And the fact is, more important now than any other time in history is city government and is the Boston City Council. When we have a president, as well as a folks in DC who can't get it together, well, you know what? We're going to get it together here. We're going to lead and not follow on these issues, and we're going to protect our young people in the Boston Public Schools, and we're going to give their teachers, who came here off the clock, an answer that, yes, you are going to be safe while you're in that school building, because we know that traumatized young people who have anxiety can't, they can't pay attention, they can't do their work. And we don't even have a nurse in every school, Counsel Pressley advocates for that on a regular basis, to deal with the increase in anxiety attack that are going on in our schools. It is our job to lead and not follow, and to make sure that we protect the future of the city of Boston, and I believe this legislation would do that. I would also simply say, if the Law Department has an issue, they need to come here. They knew when, and we have to notice the hearing within a specific period of time. You knew. And so I find it to be an unacceptable excuse to have it raised through other members of the administration, but not to address that, come downstairs and address that issue at our hearing. So I would call on the Law Department to expedite whatever issues that they have, get it to the Chair, as well as myself as a sponsor and/or the President, and let's get it on the table. But these young people can't wait and understand, summer school starts in a few short weeks. So this is not something that we can punt off till September. It is something that we need to seize the day on right now and to ensure that young people who need to be in schools are, have the insurance that they are protected in their school buildings. And as noted from the testimony, and I would encourage everyone to check it out, we are actually not in violation of the current definition of sanctuary city based on Attorney General Sessions. And so we are, we are actually not putting ourselves, excuse me, in financial harms way relative to the current definition and in codifying this, based on the most current information. Thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for expediting.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Maker for expediting yesterday's hearing. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay for the entire hearing, but did catch up on at least the pieces that I missed yesterday. It is very clear that we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we are protecting our kids and our schools, and I look forward to that work moving along quickly in the coming weeks and months ahead. But what I think is most important for us, and a place that we can act quickly, in conjunction with the BPS and the School Committee, is working to make sure that we do have a solid policy in place, that we are able to protect our kids as it stands right now, and that teachers and staff at our school buildings are adequately trained. As it is right now, staff in our school buildings do not know how to react if there were an incident at school, if federal authorities were coming into our schools, and we need to make sure that that information has been shared. And after yesterday's hearing and thinking about it overnight, and I articulated this during the hearing yesterday, is we need to put pressure on the School Committee and on the School Department to make sure that our schools, our school personnel are trained in this matter, and I look forward to getting a response from the School Department on that request as soon as I send it in, and to make sure that they are equipped at that school level. That is the, you know, where the rubber meets the road, where our teachers in our school buildings are in constant contact with our kids and giving them the tools and the resources they need to advocate for their children to protect their kids, is of the utmost importance while this other work continues alongside. I commend the Maker and thank the Chairman for expediting yesterday's hearing and look forward to continuing this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Docket number 0760 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Oh, apologies. Go back one second, Madam Clerk. Counsel Campbell on docket 0760.
Thank you. I'm not sure that my buzzer is working, so I apologize. I just wanted to applaud the Maker as well. I did when he introduced the order, as well as Counsel Flaherty for the expedited hearing. I unfortunately had a conflict and could not attend, but reviewed the tape. And I will say, I do think it's important that legal review this. I think I had some legal concerns when it was first introduced, but I do think they should do it in an expedited manner. I will add, one of the biggest concerns that students, parents, constituents have is around the lack of policy and the lack of clarification as to what it means. And so I commend Counsel Sabi George for taking the lead and sending a request to the School Committee to get them to act a little faster. They should definitely be a part of this conversation and a part of this policy. I will say that training is the biggest thing I think we can have an impact on, and I think we need to move quickly. Frankly, it doesn't take a long period of time, at least in the immediate, to equip teachers, staff, anyone who works with our students, to be able to say to them and to each other exactly what we need and how they should respond to concerns that each other exactly what we need and how they should respond to concerns that students are raising every single day and have been raising frankly since last year. And frankly, I said this at the hearing when Counsel Jackson introduced the order, we did have a great hearing the first time when he called for a hearing on this very issue. And we asked the same questions that were asked last night. And so hopefully, BPS and the Legal Department respond a little bit quicker than they did previous. So I just wanted to echo the comments of Counsel Asabi George, thank Counsel Jackson, and thank Counsel Flaherty, and apologize for not being able to attend last night's hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. And Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just want to rise and thank Counsel Jackson for bringing this forward, and thank the Chair for expediting the hearing and all the comments that have already been made and the course of action that we have two parallel tracks in this endeavor. I concur with. I did just wanted to, you know, add that, you know, something that hit me sitting in the hearing yesterday is that this is really no different than Title IX. In the same way, within our schools, you know, people were working to foster a school climate where girls would not feel discriminated. You know, it's one thing to sort of have organic support or even symbolic gestures and signs that say zero tolerance, or we're this kind of zone, and all these sorts of things. The confluence of all those things matter, but ultimately, the endorsement and the mandate that you get through policy and legislation is what really sustains a community. So even though colleges and universities, you know, every school environment was trying to be intentional about addressing these ways in which girls were being discriminated against and marginalized, it was only through Title IX saying, by law, you will be afforded the same opportunity. You will not experience harassment. You will not experience discrimination. And then later, we added sexual violence as well, because that is a civil right that people should feel, and women disproportionately impacted by sexual violence, safe in their own person and in their own body. And, you know, as I said yesterday, you know, Dr. King once said that laws don't change hearts, but they do restrain the reckless. And there is reckless activity happening in Washington right now. And so, you know, I just, again, commend the Maker, and I think that although yeoman's intentions are underway to make sure that our students do not feel vulnerable and at risk and under sort of daily threat in this way, the way that we offer some real assurance is through the mandate of policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. And Counsel Jackson.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam President. I just want to clarify that I've actually sat with the superintendent and spoken to him about training. But, and I actually asked the superintendent directly to put this on the docket at the school committee. This issue of training, to me, we heard yesterday, no teachers have been trained, and the over 120 school leaders in the city of Boston have actually only received a memo on these issues. And I've had those discussions with him directly, but the real issue, and as Counsel Presley just brought up, is that we need to have something codified that we can actually let them know. This policy or procedure, I don't believe currently cuts muster. And what we heard read into the record yesterday, again, is not even in alignment with what our Attorney General has actually put forward. This would allow us to actually codify these issues and to be able to move forward and to put some real teeth into the policy that we should have as a city as a whole. So I just want to clarify for the record that we've had some of those conversations. But the issue of training is absolutely critical and important and urgent, but we actually need a policy to train people on that is clear. And what we heard from teachers here yesterday is that there was not clarity in terms of what they're able to do or not able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Again, docket 0760 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0881, Counsel Zakeem offered the following order. Rehearing regarding a medical marijuana dispensary at 331 Newbury Street, Boston.
Counsel Zakeem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Folks may recognize the form of this hearing order. Standard required under the current regulatory regime from the state for medical marijuana dispensary to open. As some of us may have heard, I was reading about this morning and yesterday, the state is probably going to, once again, change the scheme for regulation of both medical and now recreational marijuana. But in the meantime, a hearing and then a vote by this body is one required step in the approval process. If this applicant is given a letter of non-opposition from this body, they then go, again, to the State Department of Public Health for further review, and ultimately, to the Zoning Board of Appeal here in the city of Boston to make sure that they are compliant with all regulations, that's the appropriate location and operator. I personally have not come to a determination on whether this operator and this location is right, but I look forward to giving them a fair and open hearing here in this body and either moving or not along with the process. But I certainly expect to hear from neighbors, residents, other businesses in the area, and I look forward to having a hearing on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zakeem. Would anyone else like to comment? Hearing none, docket 0881 is assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0882, Counsel Wu for Counsel Lenihan.
Counsel Lenihan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0882. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0882 has been passed.
Docket number 0883, Counsel Wu for Counsel Lenihan.
Counsel Lenihan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0883. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0883 has been passed.
Docket number 0884, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0884. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0884 has been passed.
Docket number 0885, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
And Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0885. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0885 has been passed. There are six late filed matters in the hands of the clerk, all of which are personnel in nature, and they will be added in the absence of objection. Hearing none, the matters are added. Madam Clerk, could you please read the late files?
Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George moves for suspension and passage of the first late file. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The first late file has been passed.
Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George moves for suspension and passage of the second late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, second late file has been passed.
Counsel Wu for Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the third late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the third late file has been passed.
How many have I done?
Three so far.
Yeah.
Oh, just three. Okay. Are there three other late files?
There's two. Right, no, no, I know, but I just, I'm sorry. Some reason I lost count. Did we do two?
Just one so far for Counsel Jackson.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the fourth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the fourth late file has been passed.
Counsel Wu for Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the fifth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The fifth late file has been passed.
Counsel Michelle Wu, Counsel Jackson.
And Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the sixth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the sixth late filed matter has been passed. There are four late filed matters for the consent agenda, which will be added in the absence of objection. Hearing none, the matter's added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Okay, and then we will pause for announcements or statements to the group. I have a few. Counsel Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Oh, I just wanted to wish our colleagues and everyone a Happy Father's Day. You know, one good turn deserves another. You often do this for Mother's Day, so we want to make sure, you know, you folks don't feel left out. And so just Happy Father's Day to all the dads out there, and also to the members of our community who are dads, but enhance the role of fathers, our coaches, our clergy men, police officers, firefighters, our teachers, and all the mentors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. So just a couple logistical items to tick through. First is an announcement, this practice has been in place for a while, but thanks to the amazing Carrie Jordan, all of our closed captioning transcripts are now publicly available after meetings and hearings. So the captioning that you see on the screens that WGBH Access provides, we now have those text files posted to the public notice, archive public notice afterwards. So if anyone from the public wants to just read through what happened at a meeting, you can do so by going back to that item on the calendar. Thank you, Carrie. And a few updates, we just did a walk-through of Faneuil Hall for the summer setup, so thanks especially to Daisy and Carrie and Candace and Dave from my office and the cable office and property management. It's been a lot of people coordinating. Everything looks great over there. We will be there starting in July. Two items to note there, there's no copier over there, so just for late files, if it happens, please try to get it to central staff a little bit ahead of time, so you can come with printed copies. There's a printer, but no copier there. And then, in terms of hearings over the summer, we will be up in room 801 for hearings. But because there are other city meetings happening there, and because the live streaming can only accommodate one city meeting at a time when we are on city live streaming, we are asking for one week notice for hearings, and there's a set number of slots. So we had asked everyone for how many hearings you anticipate holding over the summer. We have that many slots and more. It just takes a little bit more advance notice, so it won't be very, very hard, if not impossible, to accommodate sort of 48-hour notice for hearings. So we're asking for a week, and Lorraine will have those slots available. But you can also do hearings off-site, just as usual over the summer. Finally, oh, are these questions related to, or more statements? I see, okay. Finally, we've heard a lot of credit to Carrie throughout all of these things, so just wanted to formally congratulate him on behalf of all of us for winning the, for being a 2017 And then, I see a few other lights flashing now, but just lastly from me, and I know from Andrea too, thank you all for the amazing surprise baby shower. So, so lovely. I'm very excited. Three weeks ago for me, a couple more for Andrea, but really excited to add 12 aunts and uncles like that to baby number two as well. Thank you. Counsel O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
Ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I don't have anything particularly profound, but wanted to just reflect on what happened in Northern Virginia this morning. Before this meeting, I was over at the State House. There are some great efforts happening there to try to get the state on 100% renewable energy sources. I was, dovetails nicely with the efforts we're trying to do there, so I went to support it. And there was a crush of media. And I go to a lot of these environmental rallies and press conferences, and there's not often a crush of media. So I was delighted to see that, but when I was leaving, several reporters stopped me to ask about, as a local elected official, how I felt about what happened and was I nervous? And I said, absolutely not. This isn't about us. This isn't about elected officials. But what, two things. One, once again, we've seen incredible heroism from the Capitol Police Officers that were on-site and saved lives and prevented a much, much worse catastrophe that could have happened. And two, what my concern is that how commonplace this is now, we've seen mass shootings in school, in high schools, in elementary schools, in movie theaters, and now, as a bunch of people are getting ready in an early morning to practice for a softball, a charity softball game. And it's, you know, it's not really time to be political, and it seems like all the victims are going to make it through well, but my God, we have to do something about gun violence in this country. And we say it all the time, and we send our tweets and thoughts and prayers, and we just have to do something. This is just one more remember. So I know I'm preaching to the choir here, and you all agree with me, and we've done some great things in this city. But we really, as a country, need to get our act together when it comes to stopping gun violence, so that what happened this morning doesn't continue to happen. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make this statement.
Proceed.
I concur with Counsel O'Malley, and I appreciate that he took the leadership to acknowledge that we have to stop gun violence in this country, in this state, and also on the streets of the city of Boston. And it is critical that we, at the local level, take a leadership role. And thank you so much for acknowledging that. I did want to acknowledge an event that is happening this weekend. It is Roxbury Homecoming and Juneteenth, and that is at Franklin Park at 10:00 AM, and everyone is invited. It is a wonderful and fun and family-filled time. Juneteenth actually represents a very special day. Post emancipation, it took a little while to travel all the way to Galveston, Texas, until Juneteenth is actually the date that commemorates African-Americans really being free in the United States of America. And I think it's really critical that we think about that and we work towards economic freedom, social freedom, and justice on a daily basis. But this is a very, very fun event. I would encourage everyone to come out. And then also, it is also celebrated on the exact day of Juneteenth, on the 19th, at 3:00 PM at the National Center for African-American Art, which is on Walnut Avenue. You actually, I refer to it as the Big Head Museum, because there is a bust of Martin Luther King in the yard there. So everyone is invited. These are all free events, and I just wanted to let folks know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Lamatina, Grace Zuccaro. For Counselors Baker and Asabi George, Robert "Bo" Skinner. And for Counselors Lenihan and Flaherty, Joseph "F." Black. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, June 21st at noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, council is adjourned.